The Runnymede Public School District is to provide a successful educational experience for all children. To this end, we expect all students to achieve the New Jersey Court Grade Room contact standards at all grade levels and will ensure the follow: Demotively effective instructional programs that are aligned with the NJCCCS, a safe, clean, and healthy learning environment; a motivated, committed, skilled staff who are highly qualified in their content areas; collaboration between school, parents, and community; managerial and fiscal accountability. This meeting is called to order. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with the Sunshine Regulations. This meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in the Bourbon Hall, the Runnymede Post Office, Mary Bolt's School, Allen Bigum School, and Grace Downs School. Please stand for the President of Pleasant Lees.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Election results from the November 5th, 2013 election, certified results for the Board of Education. Maria Panzarella, 907, 47.46 percent of the vote. Naomi Davison, 842, 44.06 percent of the vote. Right-in Amy Farrey, 96 votes, 5.02 percent of the votes. Total 1,911 votes. At this time, I'll administer the oath of office to the board members, Maria, Naomi, and Amy. Each of you, I believe, have an oath of office form in your file. Round the front there and do it. Raise your right hand, repeat after me, "Aye," and state your name.
I, Naomi Davison.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to St. (St.)
And that I would bear true faith and allegiance to St. (St.)
And to the governments established in the United States.
And the governments established in the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Aye, and state your name.
Aye, Naomi Panzarella.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess the qualifications.
That I possess the qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
That I am not disqualified as a voter.
And pursuant to NJSA 19:4-1.
Pursuant to NJSA 19:4 Board.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I can give you a side voice if it's clear. Okay, roll call. Patricia Adair.
Here.
Angel Beebe.
Here.
Charles Buckheim.
Present.
Naomi Davison.
Here.
Maria Panzarella.
Here.
Patricia Smith.
Here.
Samantha Spalding.
Here.
Lynn Terrell.
Here.
And Amy Farrey.
Here.
Do you have a quorum? All members present. Okay, next thing we have is the Code of Ethics. Annually, each Board of Education must discuss the Code of Ethics. Each of you, I believe, has a copy of them in your file. Does there anyone who doesn't have a copy? After we discuss them, I'll read through them quickly. If anyone has a question or has a comment, this would be the time to discuss it. If not, at the close of that, then I would ask each of you to sign off that you received the copy and get that back to me so that we can keep it for the record. The Runnymede School District Board of Education Code of Ethics is based on NJSA 18A 12-24.1, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. The school board members shall abide by the following Code of Ethics for school board members. A) I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desired changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. B) I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. C) I will confine my action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them. D) I will carry out my responsibility, not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. E) I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. F) I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. G) I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff aspirations of the community for its schools. H) I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer. A) I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. J) I will refer all complaints to the Chief Administrative Officer and will act on complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative resolution. Does there anyone who has any questions about the Code of Ethics? Seeing done, we'll close that portion of the meeting. And we will now move on to nominational officers. I open the floor for nominations for President of the Board of Education.
I would like to nominate Samantha Spalding to President.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations for President of the Board of Education? Seeing done, I close the nominations. And we'll have a roll call vote. Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I'll turn the meeting over to the President for nominations for Vice President.
Thank you, Earl. I need nominations for Vice President of the Board of Education. Patty Adair would like to nominate Naomi Davison. Seconded by Patty Smith. And he asked me to clarify, and he can't play movies. I'm saying, Patty, Patty, Patty.
So I have to associate voices with names.
Is there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate Charles Buckheim.
Do we get a second on that?
What?
Chad, I feel bad.
I think you do a good job, but I make you so an exception.
Well, I have a question. Are you nominating him because you would prefer not to be? Because I think that that would...
I just think that as a board member who's been on the board a long time, I would like to make sure that all of our board members have a chance to see what the Vice President does and to support President. So I just felt that Charles would do a good job, and he's in a position in his life where he would have the time possibly to devote also to the position. I think he would do a great job.
Well, I mean, on that note, it makes it hard not to second it, but in the same turn, I wouldn't want to do it on the notion that you're not doing a good job. So that's why I'm second.
That is in no way personal at all. I would not be offended at all.
I mean, I agree, if you weren't sitting there, that Chad would do very well at that. So I'll second it, but please understand I'm asking legitimately because that's why there weren't any second nominations. Because I think I can speak with the whole board when they say everyone's comfortable with the Vice President being here. So I can second it, Chad. However, if you want to throw something at me now, you can do that too.
So I would, at this time, like to rescind my nomination.
No, 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 for herself. Like, she's not interested. How does that work?
She has a right to decline the nomination.
Okay, yeah, so that's...
I would like to decline the formal nomination.
Oh, thank God I nominated Chad. We would have had him. I mean, thank God I seconded.
Okay, so now you have one nomination on the floor.
Yes.
I second it.
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call, board members.
Any other?
Any other nominees?
Anybody else want to be that?
All right, roll call for Vice President, Charles. Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim. Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The over motion carries.
I had no idea that was coming.
We usually don't have a chance to discuss things until we're full board. So I just think he would do a great job, and we have a lot more time now than I do to vote to that. I have a lot of leadership ability, and I think we could all benefit from his leadership ability.
All right.
Wow. Now... So Chad, how about that seat up front?
Okay. At this time, we're open for public comment, agenda items only. The Board President will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to comment on any action items on the agenda. Please respect the following procedures. Be recognized by the Board President. State your full name and address. Identify the resolution or item number on which you wish to comment. Will it be recognized before you make your comment? Just before the resolution is voted on? Limit your comments to the specific resolution items, and limit your comments to three minutes per person. At this time, do we have any open public comment on agenda items only? Mrs. Wilson.
I'd just like to congratulate the boards. Off to a new year. I know that a lot of exciting new schools are just ready to be opened here.
Thank you.
Mrs. Allison. Alana Kelly, 161 Forest Avenue. Right now, I'm presently Councilwoman and Director of Public Safety. I'll be the liaison to the Board of Education, so you'll be seeing me every month. And I congratulate everyone, the new elected board members, and Mr. Buckheim, and Samantha.
Thank you.
And I look forward to a very cooperative association meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Alana. Glad you're here.
Yes. Any other public comment? Okay, at this time, we have...
I do. I'm sorry. It's only attended, but further on the agenda, the meeting dates. Do they work for... We had a discussion that we may need to modify our meeting schedule. Does this work for you?
This works for me, but I wanted to make sure that it worked for everybody. What we did is up until school is out, we switched it, starting next month, to Mondays up until May, and then went back to Wednesdays. There. And notice that we did do away with the July meeting just because most boards do that, and if need be, then we could just call a special meeting if anything, any kind of hire or something like that need to happen. Is that okay for everybody here? Amy, I know that Mondays are due.
I might be pushed for 6 o'clock, but... Because I work till 6:00 on Mondays.
You work until 6:00 p.m. on Mondays?
Depending.
But you could maybe hear from meeting time?
Yeah, I'll make it.
So if there's any questions or any issues, I'll call you and tell you like what's going on, or if anyone called me and let me know. If you have any issues and you want to be brought up, call me or call Mark so that way your voice can also... I'll reiterate what you want to say.
Okay.
At the work session. Does anyone else have any issues with that?
Apologies.
No, that's okay. But under reorganization, we need a motion to approve the attendance of newly elected and or appointed board members to the New Board Member Orientation Conference sponsored by the NJSA. Motion made by Patty Smith.
I second it.
Seconded by Maria. Any questions? And you do have to attend again?
I'll double check if I'm always positive because you have a raising service.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
My name, where is that?
Do you have to go still, or is that a webinar?
It's a weekend. It's sponsored by the... It's been sponsored by a grant.
Is that still... Is that still...
They brought it back.
It's back?
Yeah, they brought it back.
Bringing it back.
You can also do it on the internet if you want.
Or you can do it online.
But you can go away from the weekend. I mean, come on. You tell me how you feel about that.
Roll call, board members.
Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes, was there a... My name, where? I didn't answer my question.
Oh, Amy has the information.
Oh, okay, so you have... Okay.
There's weekends, there's online.
Okay.
Yeah, the things for all.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Next, we're approving the change in meetings up until May. Well, you know, to Mondays, and there's the rest of the dates for the rest of the year.
I need a motion.
A second. No motion.
All right, hold on. This doesn't say anything about work sessions. Did the superintendent not want work sessions anymore? So the workshops are still going to occur at 6:00, and then the meetings itself will start at 7:00. Okay.
You'll amend that motion to read that one.
Yes, the motion will read, work session to begin at 6:00 p.m. and regular meeting to begin at 7:00 p.m. each month. I need a motion for that.
I need a motion.
Motion made by Maria.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Patty Adair. Any questions? Roll call.
Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we need to have board members who are willing to serve on the committees listed. Are you still, Chad, interested in going to your...
New Jersey School Boards?
New Jersey School Boards?
If the board would like, allowing us to do it.
Oh, yes.
It's my report.
Okay, so Charles Buckheim will be our New Jersey School Boards Association. Naomi, are you a Camden County School Boards?
Yes, I've been attending all the meetings, and I find it very informative, and I'm working towards getting my second step to my board certification. So I would like it, if it's okay with you, to keep attending those.
Sure. Naomi Davison will be the Camden County School Boards Association. Camden County Educational Services Commission is also unique. I served very... For a few years, it was hard for me to understand at first, but the meeting, they really only need you once or twice a year. But if you wanted to go to the meetings, you could. It is informative, and every district takes part in it. It's right in Clementon, if anyone is interested in doing that. We can have a representative. They even will phone conference you in if they need your vote. It's not something that is like...
When are they?
I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't know. Tuesdays. I mean, one time, a few times, they were like, it was imperative that they needed a vote, and they'll just phone conference you in. Anyone interested in that?
I would like to... I would be interested in doing that. No one else is available.
I am not available. Does anyone have any problem with Naomi doing both? Is that okay, Earl? Does she does both? Okay, then, if you don't mind.
Pat, would you be interested?
I don't know if they're on Tuesdays or...
It's different. It's really different.
If I couldn't go, maybe you could go.
Okay, so Naomi Davison with Patty Smith being an alternate?
No.
Being an alternate. A lot of information comes via the mail, and it is informative. And we do, if you look at like the... What we pay out every month. I mean, we do pay them quite a bit every month, so it is...
They provide a service for us.
Yes, and it's nice to know what you're getting. And everyone's very nice. Does anybody have any problems or issues with that? Okay, then I need a motion.
I need a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Maria, seconded by Chad. Roll call.
Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the board's meet and work as a committee of the whole instead of committees named by... In the bylaws adopted in September of 2009, this board structure change will reflect... Be reflected in Billal 0155.
I'll need that motion.
Motion made by Patty Adair.
Seconded.
Seconded by Patty Smith. So this looks like it probably was just something that should have been done when we changed, when our prior administration assessed the change if we needed a whole, so...
I think we did.
All you have to do is amend the bylaws.
Okay.
We voted on it.
Yeah, we voted on it, but we didn't vote to amend the bylaw.
No, we didn't.
We definitely did not. We voted to move forward as a board like that, but we definitely did not ever vote to amend the bylaw. I don't remember that.
If that's something you want to do, we can do that later to amend the bylaws if you probably want to make it that way.
Okay.
Now, what committees are part of our...
Well, we don't have committees anymore.
Well, we do when we negotiate.
The negotiations, that's about it.
But that's it, that's what I'm saying. Is there any other committees?
And make an ad hoc committee.
We have an ad hoc committee for putting together the manual for...
Yes, okay, and there's one right there. Okay.
For the board members.
Let's go back to ad hoc.
Right.
But the rest of the decision-making and stuff, we wanted to go, you know, set it all together.
Was it for one in pass for something in the finance? Something within the finance. It was... It could have been personnel we weren't searching for superintendents.
Superintendent's secretary.
No, no, it doesn't matter.
But it could be.
But I know, but I mean, we can rule on that as we get...
Yes, if we need... If something comes up that we need to...
Then absolutely, we will.
Any other questions?
Well, I guess, what is the format? Because I know there was something... There was some committee that was formed ad hoc that I wasn't aware of. Not that I served on, you know, was interested in serving on that particular committee, but I, as a board member, did not know that this committee had met until a board meeting when something came up about that. So is there a protocol that needs to be followed?
Well, if there's...
Putting in an ad hoc committee? That's my question.
The board should approve the creation of an ad hoc committee.
Okay, okay. That's important to remember that, that...
Then the Board President...
January board meeting for the board member handbook.
Okay, so we need to do that tonight?
No, the board...
No, no, no. Oh, I already remember. That's right, okay.
Which is the 27th. We're not going to meet till 30th.
The 30th, correct.
So it'll be after the approval.
Okay.
Also, we'll also have to make a note to... There's a vacancy on the negotiations committee now, and there's only a few of us who can serve on that. So we do need to talk about that as well. And Amy, you qualify, so...
That's a point I'll raise.
And Maria is not interested, so...
Not at all.
Newbie's...
She's a newbie.
I just became eligible, and we can pretend I'm not.
You can go with it. It's just a committee, or you can add another person to fill in.
I do feel as though there was not... The committee was what, four or three?
It was four.
It was four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So there was four, and I think our... Speaking, I think they would be more comfortable with four, right? Not three?
I'm personally more comfortable with four.
I think four is...
Okay, so we will have to leave on that on our January board meeting. Is there any...
Our next meeting is the 22nd of January.
22nd.
22nd of January. So that is before...
All right, but can we... We have a motion on the table right now for the bylaw, so can we have a roll call on the bylaw?
Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe. Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so correspondence. We have non-reports, nothing. This is... We'll get back into that at our normally scheduled meeting this month. Nothing for property and transportation under personnel. I need a motion to... For numbers one and number two, the job description for the accountant and release executive session minutes for September 9th, September 25th, and October 16th, 2013.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Patty Smith.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chad. Does anybody have any questions?
How come I have to make a motion to release minutes for executive session?
Executive session minutes are classified and not open to the public until such time as the board finds that they're no longer... The reason for keeping them is closed is no longer valid. We have an open request for those minutes. I can't release them unless the board authorizes releasing them. And I've looked at them over. I don't see anything in there that is like social security numbers or people's names or any of that kind of thing. So it appears as though that they could be released. I'll double-check them again. If there's anything that's an identifying nature, I'll back that from the minutes, but unless there's a reason to keep them closed, you really shouldn't.
That was my question to him.
Roll call, board members.
Patricia Adair.
Yes.
Angel Beebe.
Yes.
Charles Buckheim.
Yes.
Naomi Davison.
Yes.
Maria Panzarella.
Yes.
Patricia Smith.
Yes.
Samantha Spalding.
Yes.
Lynn Terrell.
Yes, I do have another question about this job description. This accountant's position, are any of these responsibilities now eliminated from the VA's responsibilities? Or are they just something that...
The VA would have general oversight overall of that.
Right.
Many of them are presently being done by the...
That's what I'm saying. The wording under the VA's job description, would that have to change as well?
No, because the VA is still responsible for that happening.
Okay.
Even though they may not physically be doing the...
Correct, okay. So I guess the word is responsible. Okay. No, thank you.
Amy Farrey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under finance, I need a motion to approve the professional development workshops.
And Naomi, that other one in Woodstair, is that for the next board meeting?
I believe that is... Yes, I believe it's the 13th.
Okay, do we need to add one there?
There's already one there for 13th.
Yeah, there's one for 13th.
Is there for...
No, and... I think it's on here, correct. I think everything's here.
Right, but there is one you're going to in Woodstair, right?
Yes, but I believe it was the 13th. I believe. I'll check my calendar.
Well, Camden County one probably wouldn't be in Woodstown, it's just...
No, it's...
Salem.
Salem.
I have a question too. Naomi's listening in for the Leadership Conference of Princeton. Is that the one that the President and Vice President of the Board? Or is that a different one?
It is. But in the description, it also said any other board member that would like to have leadership training.
Why do you want to go?
If you think I should attend, I... I mean...
We didn't have June.
Why don't we have June?
I think it would be good.
Is your calendar clear that day?
I'm retired.
Which is the reason why I will not be with you. Unless I'm...
It's sunny, so me...
Yes.
I was there today.
Or unless the honey says you have something on the honey do list.
I think that would be great. It's a wonderful venue too. So can we add Charles Buckheim to February 8th, 8:30 AM?
Do you still have the plan that I sent you?
Yes.
Could you send back to me like the lead...
Yes. Yes, I'll bring it back, yes.
And then Naomi, we'll just have to get back to us on the...
I can't remember the date, but I would get that to you.
Yeah, that's no problem.
All right, but I know it was at...
It's Salem.
At Salem County, at Woodstown, right?
So can we just add that?
Yes.
So we're also going to add Naomi Davidson to attend a workshop in Woodstown, New Jersey. Dates will be determined. Was there a cost?
No.
No cost?
Free.
Just mileage? So we'll just add that then. Any questions?
Where is that?
Yes.
Do you need workshop entitled?
Salem County. Salem County.
It's the Salem County meeting.
Yes.
I guess my question is, why are you attending the Salem County meeting? Is it coordinating something with Camden County?
The Camden County, the Association, the NJ SBA.
Right.
They have encouraged all of the board members to attend different county meetings in order to...
Like Gloucester County.
In order to learn, because they have different classes they're offering.
That makes sense.
And it's also good in networking with other districts to see what other districts are doing. Because our Camden County meetings are not well attended, so other meetings would be better opportunities as well for like educational trainings. Because I have a couple here that I went to last month, so...
Don't worry about it. We added it in.
I'll get it.
Don't worry about it. We added it in. The Town County School Boards Association meeting in Woodstown, New Jersey. Eight to be determined. Roll call. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. Can I be added to the 29th?
Sure you can. You want to go to Valaries?
Yeah.
Okay.
I actually did tell Earl that. I just never got to.
Patty Adair. So we're gonna, all right. So I'm going to add Patty Adair to the Gloucester County meeting. Anyone else want to go? Anybody else want to go? All right. And then you have everything for the Woodstown one there as well? Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay.
Roll call.
Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckheim?
Yes.
Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Penzerella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, I think I didn't even make the motion to second it.
Oh.
Is my...
Oh, it's probably because I messed up or Earl used to have told me about myself. Can we backtrack for a minute? Sorry, I was writing everything down and I didn't know. Can we have a motion to approve all of that under the professional development workshops?
I'll make a motion to approve all of that.
Thank you, Patty Smith, second.
I'll second.
Lynn Terrell?
Now, we're calling.
Sorry, that's my call.
Patricia Adair?
Yes.
Angel Beebe?
Yes.
Charles Buckheim? Naomi Davidson?
Yes.
Maria Penzerella?
Yes.
Patricia Smith?
Yes.
Samantha Spalding?
Yes.
Lynn Terrell?
Yes.
Amy Farrelly?
Yes.
I apologize.